Hi, everyone. This is a 2024 budget hearing of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Today is Tuesday, August 29, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Pede Mont Smith?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Welcome tonight to four of the city's 2024 budget hearings. Tonight, we will hear presentations from Bloomington Transit with John Connell. That's 25 minutes. City of Bloomington Utilities with Thic Kelson, also 25 minutes. Fire Department with Chief Jason Moore, 20 minutes. And finally, Police Department with Chief Mike DeKoff, 20 minutes. So our presentations tonight total 90 minutes. We will have the timer on display to aid presenters as they go. We will have time in between each presentation for council questions and public comment. I would like to, do you have the land and labor?
Sure.
I would like to ask Councilmember Pede Mont Smith to read our land and labor acknowledgement.
Yes, thank you. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and in Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color. And we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward, knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you. A few things to note for tonight. So last night, a motion passed for structuring debate throughout the budget hearings. We will limit council member questions to no more than three minutes per council member per presentation and limit council member comments to no more than three minutes per presentation. Public comment is limited to two minutes per speaker. And of course, we will entertain motions to extend comment or debate if we need it. Next, I also know we did this last night, but I think it would be useful to again go through what we do in these budget hearings and what the city budget process looks like moving forward from here. So this week, we are hearing proposed budgets from each department. All votes taken this week on a department's budget are non-binding recommendations that reflect the council's position on a presented budget at this time. The council's adoption of the 2024 budget will not include department-by-department votes. The council is scheduled to consider and vote on three appropriation ordinances and three salary ordinances later this fall. The three appropriation ordinances include the Civil City Budget, the Utilities Department Budget, and the Budget for Bloomington Transit. The three salary ordinances will include salaries for officers of the Police and Fire Departments, salaries for appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all departments of the city, and salaries for elected officials. Council discussion and a public hearing on these items of legislation is scheduled for September 27, beginning at 6:30 p.m. The budget adoption meeting is scheduled for October 11, beginning at 6:30 p.m. So tonight, as we did last night, we will entertain motions to recommend including department budgets into the relevant salary ordinance or appropriation ordinance. And now, we will hear from the Bloomington Transit General Manager, John Connell. We have 25 minutes allotted for this presentation. Welcome, Director Connell.
Thank you. John Connell, General Manager of Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. With me tonight is Krista Browning. She is the Controller for Bloomington Transit. Hopefully, between the two of us, we can answer any questions you may have on our proposed 2024 budget. So Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation is a separate municipal corporation with independent taxing authority. The corporation has a five-member Board of Directors, which have authority to oversee the corporation. Two board members are appointed by the mayor and three are appointed by this council. The Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation Board of Directors has reviewed and recommended this 2024 budget be presented to this council for approval. I'd like to take a few minutes to review some of the 2023 ED-LIT projects that were funded last year, bring you up to speed. The East-West Express Route, which is, hopefully, will become a bus rapid transit project, has been now called the Green Line. We have a consultant selected to conduct Phase One and Phase Two studies. We had $450,000 of ED-LIT funding programmed for that project. Work should begin in early September. There were two new positions that we programmed ED-LIT money to support. The Grant and Procurement Specialist Position, that was filled in January. That position, that person, has filed three federal grant applications. One was successful, $1.1 million. The Manager of Marketing and Development position was filled in June. We're very fortunate, we were able to recruit a seasoned transit professional who is able to hit the ground running with proficiency in certain transit planning softwares, which we have since acquired. The big project, the facility acquisition, the land acquisition, $250,000. We have contracted with a consultant to help in this endeavor. Work's going to begin shortly on that as well. The lion's share of last year's ED-LIT money was used as local match for the electric bus purchase, over $1 million. We originally programmed $350,000 and $474,000 for two related projects, the CATAVL, which is Computer Automated Dispatch Automated Vehicle Locating Dispatch Operating Platform. We successfully applied for federal funding, and we were able to receive the $1.1 million. So those programs will be used with local match lit funding only. So in short, the $3.8 million in 2023 lit funds that were appropriated to BT resulted in over $8 million in federal funding. One of the big accomplishments this year is the passage of formal adoption of our strategic plan, which is called BT, Transform BT. There's five primary agency goals: serving customers, innovation, finance and management, employees, and community and equity. Let's kind of walk through these quickly to give you an idea of what we've been up to. In terms of serving our customers, we launched same-day scheduling for access clients. So this is a huge improvement for the individuals that use that program. They have spontaneous use of the service now. As a result of the lit funding, we implemented the Sunday service in March. We have provided additional funding for on-demand microtransit options. And this year, we have $240,000 programmed for new passenger shelters and bus stop upgrades for passenger amenities. We continue to explore service area expansion to better serve the needs of our riders. Get a drink here. In terms of innovation, we have several big projects going, the CATAVL that I mentioned. We're looking at an in-house microtransit dispatch platform, electronic fare collection equipment. We feel that cash fares eventually will be a very, very small percentage of the fares collected. I mentioned the transit planning software that we've already required. We're looking at bus operator scheduling software, and we recently upgraded our payroll Terms of finance and management, we completed, as a public agency, we know how important it is to be good stewards of all our funding. We recently completed a 2023 triennial review with the Federal Transit Administration, which resulted with zero findings or follow-up issues. That's a rarity. We received the Achievement of Excellence certificate from the FTA as a result. We also completed our 2023 financial audit with zero findings or follow-up issues. In terms of employees, we've conducted training sessions for all our employees to cover topics that were important to them, such as customer de-escalation strategy, as well as some other topics. We've held employee input sessions so employees could voice their concerns, offer ideas, and ask questions. We've hosted an employee appreciation and awards recognition event. And we recently adopted SMS technology to message employees with alerts, as well as something as simple as a birthday wish or recognition of an employment anniversary. In terms of community and equity, we continue to offer half-fair discounts to all disabled and elderly customers. We have 42 nonprofit agencies that are also eligible to purchase half-fair media. The new fare collection equipment that we're in the process of procuring will include fare capping capabilities. We're continuing to try to develop new demand mobility options for individuals who may not have access to traditional fixed route service. It could be something as simple as just being too far from it to use it. Talk a little bit about ridership. Good news is, it's slowly rebounding to pre-pandemic levels. The first week of this fall semester, ridership was in line with pre-pandemic levels, very encouraging. Our 2023 fixed route ridership is up 30% from last year. We're forecasting over 2 million passenger trips for 2023. We did launch one new route, serving a high-density apartment complex at the beginning of the fall semester. That makes three partnership agreements we have existing that cover the fully allocated costs of those routes. That's a win-win because they're open to the public. As far as the 2024 budget, I'll walk through the four categories. Personnel, $7.8 million, which represents an 11.3% increase. That increase is driven by a few things. Average wage increase for BT employees of 6%. We also have 6,200 hours programmed for contingency service. So during the course of 2024, if opportunities present themselves to operate new service, whether it be a new route, whatever the case may be, we have the money budgeted to accomplish that. Terms of materials and supplies, $1.7 million, 13.92% decrease. We locked in our fuel costs for 2024 significantly less, and we're seeing a reduction in the price of parts and supplies. Services is increased by 29%, $3.4 million as opposed to $2.6. There's a few big projects within the service category this year. We have $600,000 programmed for A&E for renovations at the Grimes Lanes facility. We have extra funding in place for the microtransit program. And we have $100,000 that we budgeted for federal lobbying activities. As far as capital, you can see a significant reduction from $13.5 million from last year's $23.2. This is simply because we don't have any buses being replaced or purchased. The 2024 lit money, this is how we are allocating it. The lion's share, $2.4 million, we want to use as a dedicated local match for land acquisition. We plan to apply for $12 million. We want to use $200,000 for the microtransit program to continue to support it. It's been wildly successful. I mentioned the $600,000 for the A&E for the building renovations. We want to continue the Sunday service, the $300,000, and continue the fare subsidy program, it's $75,000. I'll walk you through the budget revenue highlights. BPTC taxes represent $2.3 million of our revenue. Fares, which include the fare box, IU contract, and our service agreements, is right over $2 million. Of course, there's a 3.8 appropriated from the city and lit funding. The Public Mass Transportation Fund administered through the state has been flatlined for the next two years, the $2.6 million. We hope to obtain $12,672,956 in federal funds. That's our goal. Miscellaneous revenue, this includes everything from bus advertising to scrap metal, and there's a variety, a lot of other little pieces to that, at $685,000. And we plan to use 2.4 in cash reserves to balance this budget, which will leave us with over $15 million in cash reserves. Challenges for 2024 and beyond, the labor market continues to be a struggle for us. We've seen some improvement, but we're still not where we need to be in terms of a full roster. We hope to continue to see the ridership recovery. There's been some very positive indications that we're getting there. The expansion of the Grimes Lanes facility and property, as we take delivery of the new buses in fourth quarter of 2024, we're going to need space. So this is a big priority for us. And I mentioned quite a few of the technology programs that we're going to be launching this year and into next year. You know, bringing the staff up to speed and making the transition will be a challenge, but I think we're all up to the task. So with that, thank you for consideration of the Bloomington Transit 2024 budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to councilmember questions, councilmember Scambaluri, and then councilmember Sims.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Could you share an update on Sunday ridership? Is it what we expected? Are you pleased with it?
So it started off pretty strong, about 60 passenger trips an hour. The first month we launched, we went fare-free to encourage people to take advantage of it, tapered off a little bit after that, but it skyrocketed first August, the week of August 14. So now that the students are back, we're seeing it's right in line with what we'd want to see. So we're very encouraged by that.
Good, thank you. And you talked about allowing some budget for lobbying activities. Can you say more about that? Who are we lobbying?
So we plan, we are currently working with CityLink in Fort Wayne, the transit system there, to work together to request qualifications for federal lobbyists. Our intention is to go after some very significant amounts of federal funding for the land acquisition and possibly building renovations. And to put us in the best position to succeed, we feel it's critical that we have a lobbyist working with us. You know, larger systems do this, and I think it'll be money well spent.
And that actually flows very well into my third question. I'm impressed with all you've done, and all that your staff has done to bring in outside dollars. Is there anything you would have us do to position ourselves to even be better at that?
Well, the lobbyist is one critical component of it, I believe. The fact that we can demonstrate when we make application that we have the dedicated local match in place is huge. And the lit funding has served us very well in that role.
Anything else? Anything else in terms of staffing?
Well, you know, letters of recommendation and support, things of that nature. When we put together an application, we wanted as many letters of support that, you know, the local elected officials are on the same page and in support of a project helps.
So most of what I've heard you say that falls within our purview is the availability of local matching funds, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Connell. The first thing I do want to say is that, in particular with BT, this council, maybe I should just speak for myself, we've been used to transparent, forthright, and open communications and working toward our community's goals. And that has been maintained, if not even enhanced. So I really, really appreciate that. My question, of the projected federal revenues that we expect, about $12.6, $12.7 million? And I know you don't have a crystal ball or a guarantee, but how confident are you that we'll maybe receive that amount? And what are some contingencies if we don't?
There is 3.9 in federal funding that is currently being flexed, which is sitting in an account for additional bus purchases, which we really don't want to do at this point because we, so if we can flex those funds for the land acquisition, we feel pretty confident about that 3.9. The $6 million for the additional land acquisition, I'd say it's 50/50. But, you know, let me retract that. I'd say it's 75% if we can get everything done we need to do by the time we make the application. So the land acquisition services contract, if we have a parcel that we're interested in, and we have the environmental work completed, when we make application and we have everything in place, I would think we'd be in a much stronger position. So that's why we want to have those pieces in place before we make that application.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's talk about the contingency service fund.
Okay.
$416,000. Which line item is that? How standard?
It's just rolled into the personnel lump sum. So when we budget, you know, we figure out how many hours of service we're going to operate, what the, you know, wage rates are going to be, things of that nature. What we did is, I just felt it was important that we included some additional surplus funds in place in the event an opportunity presents itself. For Latimer Square, the old Kmart site, you know, the expectation is, once everybody, all the residents have moved in, there may be an opportunity for another service agreement to supplement service for that facility. We want to have the funding in place to be able to be nimble and respond. You know, as buses become at capacity and we have to leave people standing at a curb, the developer of that complex may be willing to say, hey, you know what? We need to take action. And so if those funds are spent, they will also be, hopefully, a corresponding revenue source coming in.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted you to finish because our time is up. So thank you very much, Mr. Connell.
Councilmember Volin?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, and it's been a pleasure to work with you as well. What was the new route number serving the high-density complexes?
Mueller Park Apartments off of Third.
But you don't know the number? Doesn't matter, I'll look it up.
I don't know if that might be.
What were the numbers, following Councilmember Scambaluri's question, what were the Sunday numbers you were hoping to see?
We were wanting them to be at least in line with Saturday service. Let me see what I have here. And they are, but we think it's going to continue to grow with, you know, now that the school year has started. I can email you a breakdown.
I'll send a question asking for just sort of roughly, what are typical daily and weekend numbers? That'd be great.
I have a chart prepared, I can email you.
That'd be great. Thirdly, and this is a question I know you know I'm going to ask, does the money for the Green Line study include money to also study a downtown circulator?
So the Phase Two of the Green Line study includes, for the corridor analysis, and the language is going to read, how would the Green Line impact all the other routes or any other new service that might complement it?
Does that include a downtown circulator?
Well, as of now, the specifications haven't been outlined. So we're at the part of the contract, we have the consultant picked out. As far as the scope of work, we're on Phase One.
Maybe I should ask, does the budget include enough money, do you think, to include that in their scope of work?
I think that would be totally feasible.
Very good. The final question has to do with rural transit. So Area 10 has pointed out that they can't provide service to many areas now that they'll be part of the urbanized area part of, starting next year. What is BT's immediate reaction to this? Will there be any new service that BT is providing on January 1st?
Hopefully, as long as there's an equitable funding mechanism in place to support it, and that's where we're at in the process.
So you're negotiating with Area 10?
Yeah, we've had meetings. The mayor has participated in those as well. And I believe when I was here during the ordinance for the service expansion, you know, we would welcome a member of council to participate in those negotiations, if anyone's interested.
When you send me the chart, let me know where and when the meeting is, I'll be there.
All right.
Unless somebody else would prefer to. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Connell. First, real quick, you said there was a new route launched this month, and just clarified it was for Mueller Park Apartments. So that replaces a private route they had, right?
Yeah, they were using the cutaway, you know, the mini-bus type.
So are they paying for the new route?
Yes.
Awesome. The memo in our budget packet from you indicates that there is a, what was it? Projected decrease of 6.4% in passenger fares for next year. Can you explain why that is?
Yeah, I think we overestimated the level of recovery in the 2023 budget. You know, we were hoping to see ridership rebound much more quickly to pre-pandemic levels, and, you know, it's been, we're getting there, but I think we were overly optimistic in 2023. That's simply what the explanation is. Hopefully, we'll, you know, that number will be, you know, we'll be on the opposite end of that this year where we, you know, underestimate it, hopefully.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, not great, but thank you for the explanation. And then my last question is, can you tell us a little bit more about possible land acquisition and expansion of your facilities, or is that something that is kind of confidential at this point?
Well, yeah, that's, you know, I can say this, there are some parcels that we have a potential interest in, but we want to leave the negotiations, the exploration of the valuations, things of that nature, to the consultant that we've hired. So really, you know, we have some interest in certain parcels, but, you know, there's a lot of work to be done before anything would officially happen.
But it would be near your current location, or would it be elsewhere in the city?
I don't know the answer to that. That could, I'd say maybe. There are some advantages to the land around the Grimes Lane facility. There are some disadvantages. You know, part of that property is in a floodplain, so that's less than ideal. If you've been by there, you can see we have an open-air storage facility, which is less than ideal. So there are some considerations to vet, and, you know, we're going to, you know, start from scratch and see what's available and what the opportunities are.
All right, thank you.
Mr. McConnell, in your memo, you talk about advertising revenues, $155,000, and you mention Mesmerize, which I assume is an advertising agency?
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about them, what they do, and how much that costs us?
Sure. It costs us nothing, it generates the revenue. So we solicited proposals for transit advertising services. So it's a turnkey solution. You know, they sell the advertising, they install the advertising, and send us the check. We make the buses available for the installs. I've worked at other agencies where it was an internal process, and there's a lot of productivity cost that, you know, you have in mechanics prep buses and get them ready. productivity cost that, you know, you have in mechanics, prep buses and get them ready for vinyl installs. And, you know, this is, in my opinion, the best approach. Now, with that being said, one of the conversations we've had with the staff is too much of a good thing. You know, we're starting to lose our identity, our branding. You know, I had one person ask me if Ken Nun owned the bus company, because there's a lot of Ken Nun ads on those buses. And that's something we're going to be looking at in 2024, that there needs to be a balance. We want the BT brand to be out in front. And, you know, the money was good, but I think there's a corresponding marketing cost that we're missing out on, or we're incurring.
Is this a local company?
They're out of Indianapolis, I believe.
Indianapolis?
Is that correct? Their key market is transit advertising. They're good at what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Connell, for the presentation. Delighted to hear about the grant funding matches for the lit. My question concerns the Green Line. Do you have any specifics that you can tell us about, for instance, you have goals in mind in terms of frequency of service and hours of service is going to run seven days a week, you know, the estimated time, you know, for the express to go east to west and that sort of thing?
So our ultimate goal was to see it materialize into a Bus Rapid Transit line, or what is also called Bus Rapid Transit Lite, which may not rise to the full level of a traditional Bus Rapid Transit, where you have total dedicated right-of-way through the whole route. What we envision for this project is a combination of dedicated areas, what I call through the pinch points, to keep the bus, you know, what's critical is to keep the bus on schedule, the frequency intervals, the buses spaced properly apart. You know, you'd also would see passenger amenities, the stops would, you know, obviously look a lot different than a traditional bus stop, you know, more modern. And so we do have a corridor, you know, I shared with the council last year, just a map outlining, you know, and that's been shared with the consultant, and that's what will be studied. Typically, what you see in other cities, when they start talking about BRT, and then they start talking about TOD, Transit Orientated Development, because the developers will usually put in high-density apartments, condos, along a Bus Rapid Transit line. We do things a little opposite here because the housing's already in place, now we're going to put the line in. You know, we have critical high-density complexes that will benefit from the BRT. So it's going to take time. And, you know, we have to, this project is much bigger than Bloomington Transit, it's going to involve, you know, input from the city, planning, engineering, there's a lot of moving pieces. But the first step is going to start in a couple of weeks with the general feasibility study.
Okay. And when would you expect to be able to report to us, for instance, about the feasibility study? How long of a duration do you think it will require?
Nine months.
Nine months. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions from councilmembers? No? Okay, at this time, we can go to the public. So if anyone in council chambers would like to comment on the Bloomington Transit budget, just head to the podium. And if anyone is online on Zoom, you can raise your hand or send a message in the chat, and our council attorney will get that.
Do you have a taker on Zoom? Eric Spoonmore?
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Spoonmore.
Hi, this is Eric Spoonmore, President of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Madam Chair, I just wanted to express a couple of things first. Really appreciate Mr. Connell's presentation, very transparent, no surprises there, very consistent with the original budget that was delivered to the public last week. And I think that I can speak for many of our members that were just very pleased and delighted with Mr. Connell's leadership of Bloomington Transit, and think that we're in very good hands with him. Also, I wanted to express to the council our appreciation again for the ordinance that you passed that would expand transit services into, well, outside of the city jurisdiction. Going back to some of Mr. Volan's questions, we know there's going to be a lot of city residents who are going to need affordable transportation options out to their places of employment at Park 48, as well as institutions of education out there so that they can get training that they need to be successful in their lives. And so I hope that this budget can support a swift solution for those city residents who need to get out to Park 48 for those purposes. So in addition, I think, you know, this is a great and meaningful way that we can address climate justice, so that we don't have to have so much dependency on fossil fuels. So hopefully, that budget will be able to support that in the year ahead. And again, just wanted to say thanks to Mr. Connell, to the Bloomington Transit team, and thank you all to the city council.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
No, not that I see.
Okay, and now we will go back to council for our final comment. Anyone have a comment? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I just want to express my appreciation to Mr. Connell and Bloomington Transit for optimizing the lit funds, fantastic job, really great. And especially for being responsive to our community and to the things that, you know, members of the city council spoke with you about and asked. And so I just want to really express my appreciation for that and say thank you, and good luck for the future, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to also thank you for your budget presentation and the PowerPoint that we got today and that you presented. It's good that we have that to go over. The uptick or the big increase in ridership this past month is really promising, and I hope we are on track to regain the numbers that we saw before the pandemic. So that's great news. And it's also great to hear that one of, another apartment complex that used to have shuttle, private shuttles, is now part of Bloomington Transit's service, because that'll help other people along that route as well. So good news there. And just a little plug for Area 10, and that, of course, we want to keep rural transit active for the actual rural routes that they have. So hopefully, during those negotiations, you know, they can maintain the services that they have provided for people that are not going within the urban area. So thank you very much.
Oh, Councilmember Volan?
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Well, I just want to remind the administration, setting aside Mr. Connell's excellent presentation, that this council voted unanimously to endorse the idea of a circulator, and that it unanimously adopted the ordinance that would allow service outside the city. It was a big deal, and I'm glad that we did it. I would like to see not only service outside the city sooner than the Green Line itself. I mean, I think that the number three bus can go to Ivy Tech now with negotiation with the county. But I'd also like to see us talking to Ellisville. I think that it's overdue for there to be bus service to Ellisville. Of course, Ellisville has to cooperate, but I want to encourage them with that this is the opportunity that the rest of the county has been waiting for, Ellisville included. But back to the issue of the circulator, I am very encouraged that BT and the board are supportive of it. I just want to make sure that the administration understands that this is something that the council is interested in seeing, and it's a nominal amount of money, apparently according to Bloomington Transit. So there should be no reason why that is not included in the study, the, what was the term? I forget the term, but the course of work that the consultant will make. Otherwise, I am a little confused at the, I think Mueller Park is already served by buses, so it must be another high-density apartment. But I'll ask that question in the many questions that I'll send to Transit. All in all, I just want to say that I have been an enthusiastic supporter of transit. This budget is demonstration of why, and I look forward to writing some new service in 2024. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. I will just follow up with a few comments. I would also like to say wow on the ED Lit leverage funds, that's very amazing and really exciting to see it. Very happy to see the Sunday service. I think it's so valuable to students and the Sunday workforce, so I'm really so happy that BT could get that in the works. I'm interested in learning about data around the nonprofit rides or the tickets that you offer to nonprofits and the folks who use those, just to see if you think that's going well, or if there's something we could do to get the word out more to those folks. So I will follow up with you on that. And I will just say this word for the third time tonight, I am delighted with the 2023 goals and excited for 2024. So thank you very much. Okay, with that, we can entertain a motion.
Yes, just one moment. I move that the council recommends inclusion of the Bloomington Transportation Corporation budget as presented within the relevant salary ordinance and/or appropriation ordinance for consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volan?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. That passes 9-0. Up next, we have City of Bloomington Utilities with Director Vic Kelson. Vic has 25 minutes, sorry, Director Kelson has 25 minutes. Thank you for being here and welcome.
Good evening, council. I'm Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. I have with me our Assistant Director for Finance, Matt Havy, our Assistant Director for Engineering, Phil Pedan, our Assistant Director for Environmental Programs, Kat Sager, and our Assistant Director for Operations, Hector Ortiz Sanchez. We also have with us, in spirit through Zoom, Assistant Director for Transmission and Distribution, James Hall. I'm happy to present the proposed budget for the Utilities Department for 2024. This budget was considered and approved by the Utility Service Board on July 31st. The City of Bloomington Utilities exists to provide safe and sustainable water, wastewater and stormwater services, in an economical manner, promoting public health, prosperity, and quality of life in our community. Got to get the clicker. We have 208 staff, that includes our part-time staff and interns. We have three separate utilities, the Water Works, the Sewer Works, and the Stormwater Utility. They are all funded by separate revenue streams, although financially, the Sewer Works and the Stormwater Utility are combined into one. We have six interconnected divisions for Administration, Engineering, Finance, Operations, Transmission, Distribution, and Environmental Programs. All of the revenues that support the Utilities activities are paid for by customers' water bills. We receive, we do not receive regular monies from property taxes or income taxes, although this year we did receive some ARPA money for a VAC truck. Since I've been here working with the council for the last eight budget cycles, we've instituted a regular schedule for rate reviews, which has made a huge difference for us. We've done the Water Works rates in 2016 and 2021, the Sewer Works in 2016, '19, and 2022. And then we've reviewed the Stormwater Utility rates in 2019 and 2022. We've also spent a lot of the last six or seven years deploying technology that's brought CBU in line with the most modern utilities in the state. We implemented an advanced metering infrastructure across our entire system. We've upgraded our supervisory control and data acquisition, our SCADA systems, that comes up later. So that's what SCADA is. Laboratory Information Management System that integrates all of our laboratory analyses and other data streams for decision-making in the plants. We have replaced our GIS with ArcGIS system, which has been a huge success for our field crews, and it's also fed into the deployment of the City Works Asset Management Program, which we're now using throughout the Utilities Department. I'd like to take just a moment to go through a few of the highlights from our 2023 budget goals. We are presently in the process of completing a strategic plan. We're working with Jim Ginley, who is a strategic planner, who's done a lot of work with the American Waterworks Association, I'll refer to him again later. We have been in the process of considering a possible future relocation to the Winston Thomas property. The financial plan was completed, and then last night, the Utility Service Board authorized us to proceed with the first steps in doing an architectural and engineering site plan for that project. That would be used to inform possible future bonding to execute a project like that. In the Water Works, we're completing right now the process of replacing all the filter media at the Monroe Water Treatment Plant, where, if you've been out on 446, you may have seen, we're in the process of rehabilitating and recoding the East Tank. We continue our water main replacement program, with most of that work being done in-house now, rather than hiring out contractors. We've completed an analysis for a long-term water supply resiliency plan, working with a contractor, and we have just last week completed the installation of new bar screens at the intake at Lake Monroe. In the Sewer Works, we continue pipe rehabilitation. This year, we expect to complete three miles of pipe, 30 sewer laterals as an experiment to see how well lining will work for sewer laterals, and 30 of our manholes. We are conducting sewer improvements near the Catalent site, that is funded through nearly $2 million grant from the Ready Grant Program from the state. We are in the design phase for the final stage of the modernization and capacity improvements at the Dillman Plant. We will replace three lift stations, continue to implement our clear water reduction program, and our waste energy resource facility study will begin its second phase soon, and we expect to have something to discuss with council in the fourth quarter this year. In the Stormwater Utility, we completed the construction of the Bio Retention Facility at Devon Lane. We've done a lot of in-kind support for various projects with other organizations. We've built three new detention basins. We installed the electrical conduit near the Von Lee, this is in support of the last phase of the Clear Creek Tunnel Project. We've implemented the first phase of our Stormwater Master Plan, funded 11 rain gardens around various city projects, completed the wetland mitigation project at Weemer Lake, and we're in the design phase for the street sweeping maintenance program as we promised last year. We're developing the plan for that this year and deploying next year. As I talk about our 2024 goals, we organize our goals in, or organize according to the Effective Utility Management Program, which was developed by the American Waterworks Association, US EPA, and a lot of other organizations. The EUM system organizes our department activities into 10 activity areas, ranging from product quality and customer satisfaction, to infrastructure strategy and performance, and community sustainability. So there are 10 different categories in the goals. So there are 10 different categories in the goals. When you look at our budget memo, you will see all 10 of those, there will be goals assigned for each of those 10 activity areas, but in the interest of time, I'm only going to cover five of the largest ones tonight. Product quality is our largest activity area. Our goals are to produce fit-for-purpose drinking water, wastewater effluent, stormwater discharge, and the other recovered resources, like the sludge from the wastewater plant, that have to meet or exceed all the requirements for whatever they're going to be used for, even if they're going to be sent onto a landfill. Now, under the product quality umbrella, we have goals in, in each of the utilities. In the Water Works, it's to operate the plant 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the whole year, with no, with no violations. We will achieve an annual average of no more, sorry, no more than two-thirds of the US EPA's limits for disinfection by products. And we will complete the service line inventory that's mandated by EPA for lead service lines to identify where we need to do future work to replace lead service lines. In the Sewer Works, our, our product quality goal is to operate both of the plants without any violations for the whole year. Oh, had me worried for a moment there. And the Stormwater Utility, we're implementing two of the items that were defined in our Stormwater Master Plan that was published last year. We will complete the development of a comprehensive stormwater design manual. We will complete 25% of an inventory and condition assessment for all of our stormwater infrastructure in the city, and will implement MS4, that's municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4-based street sweeping maintenance, which means street sweeping activities that are oriented towards keeping debris and contaminants out of our surface waters. Operational optimization is our second largest goal area. This is to promote ongoing, timely, cost-effective, reliable, and sustainable performance throughout our, throughout of our, throughout our system. For all the utilities, operational optimization will be to complete or continue the implementation of City Works Asset Management. That's the sort of thing that once you get going on it, you keep coming up with more things you want to do with it. So in 2024, we'll continue the deployment of our work order system. We'll also be integrating it with New World to handle things like automatically purchasing new inventory materials and, and so forth. We'll also be deploying new decision support tools using all of our other data systems. We'll expand the use of City Works by integrating IT pipes, which is a way of monitoring our pipe conditions. And then we'll implement the work order management for the new street sweeping program. Employee and leadership development is driven towards recruiting and retaining a workforce that is competent, motivated, adaptive, and safety-focused. As in the past, CBU remains committed to personnel safety. The picture here illustrates why. We continue to do ongoing safety training for, for all of our employees, field crews, office staff, and our plant staff. We will continue, as the administration has asked, to invest 1.5% of our personnel budget for training and organizational development. We work to make sure that there is at least one CPR certified team member on every work site, and we will continue our diversity, equity, inclusion training with our managers next, next year. Financial viability is planning for the full lifecycle cost of all of our operations and measuring the values of our resources and assets. Through all the utilities, we'll continue to implement our City Works-driven centralized work order and inventory systems, and also our procurement systems will be integrated as well. And then finally, infrastructure strategy and performance. The goal is to maintain and enhance the condition of all of our assets over the long term at the lowest possible lifecycle cost and at, with acceptable risk. We will complete the facilities design and financial analysis of the Winston Thomas Project contingent upon approval of the Utility Service Board and the council. We would hope to begin construction by the fourth quarter of 2024. This building is the, the superintendent's house at the Winston Thomas property, which we plan to preserve and turn into a useful building. It's got a lot of history behind it, and we think it should be maintained. For the Water Works, we will be performing a financial analysis and a rate case that we will hope to bring to council in the spring of 2024. That would be, need to be approved by the Indiana Utilities Regulatory Commission for possible implementation in '25. That, any project that we might do at Winston Thomas or otherwise funded by bonding would have to be approved by IURC as well. So at this, once we start moving, if that project begins to move along, it's, it will be dependent on approval by the USB, the council, and the IURC. We will replace another mile or two of water mains. It's one plus. Depends, sometimes they're more expensive to replace than others. So we expect it will be at least a mile next year. We will be replacing chemical feed lines at the Monroe Plant. This is our first, we'll be working through a guaranteed savings contract. We'll also install a backwash tank, make pump modifications, and replace valve actuators at Monroe. So it's a big, another second year of capital improvements at the Monroe Plant, following the, the second phase of the rate case going into effect next year. We'll also refurbish the South Central and the West Booster Pumping Stations and continue to improve our enterprise resiliency and investigate long-term resiliency projects further. In the Sewer Utility, we'll be implementing new SCADA displays at Bluechur Pool. We'll continue our sewer lining and clear water programs. We're developing flow models with a contractor for three of our critical sewer sheds. We hope to proceed with the Resource Recovery Energy, Waste-to-Energy Facility, and that, of course, is contingent upon approval by the board and council. We will begin the Phase Two Dillman Projects, upgrade 10 more lift stations, and add a canine unit. By canine unit, I actually mean a canine unit. We are asking to add a canine handler and procure a dog and supporting equipment. This, the dog can be a more effective way to identify degraded sewers or possibly damaged sewer laterals. We can also, the dog can also be trained to look for water leaks by smelling chlorine. This has been done at at least eight other utilities in the United States and a number of utilities in Europe. We would be the first in Indiana to try this. We are hopeful we can move along with this. We've been working with the Bloomington Police Department on determining what exactly we would need to proceed with this. On the stormwater side, infrastructure strategy, we'll continue our residential stormwater grant program. We will complete the inlet improvements at the Sixth and Indiana intersection. That is the last phase of the Clear Creek infrastructure replacement, and we'll have our street sweeping maintenance program in operation. Overall, our budget highlights, we expect, on the revenue side, we expect about an 8.9% increase in revenue. That's for water. That is based on the fact that the second, the second phase of the 2021 rate case will be going into effect January 1st. Sewer and stormwater, we're assuming, based on past history, an increase in revenue of about 1.5% for each of those utilities. Budget highlights for the Water Works, just to remind everyone, we budget every dollar of anticipated revenue, whatever is not included in the 100, 200 personnel services, supplies, other services, and the debt service or sinking fund. Whatever's not included in those is left over as what we call ENR, which is, stands for extensions and replacements. That's the money we use to do other capital projects and capital repairs in the plants and other infrastructure. That is also, that is defined across all three utilities. And over a rights rate cycle between one rate case and the next, we expect the ENR to go down every year. In this case, it's not going down for water because we're anticipating additional revenue from the second phase of the rate case. You'll see it will be different for the other two utilities. In the Sewer Works, we're expecting an overall revenue increase of about 1.5%. That's reflected in the first three categories. The sinking fund will be increasing because of new bonding, and so that means the ENR will go down accordingly. But overall, we're anticipating about 1.5% additional revenue, or 1.5% overall increase in the Sewer Works budget. And finally, in the Stormwater Utility, we're expecting about 1.5% change in revenue. Again, ENR will be going down approximately by the amount that the sinking fund will go up. That sinking fund is going up because we will, in our budget plan, because we anticipate taking on additional debt to complete the projects at Dillman and to complete the Clear Creek Tunnel Project. Overall, our budget, the 2024 budget will support all of our stated goals. We strive to be sustainable, safe, high-performing, innovative, inclusive, and forward-facing. And I'd like to thank you all for listening to our presentation tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. First, Councilmember Rallo, and then Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you, Director Kelson. I had a question about your evaluation of the capacity of facilities in the near horizon, say, the next 10 years or so. For instance, a large development is about to proceed in the Sudbury region with 6,000 units, and other, there'll be other projects underway as well, perhaps extension of services into the county depending upon annexation, et cetera. What's your, what's your estimation? We've done work at Dillman. We did water, we increased water capacity production at Lake Monroe a few years back. Where are we placed in terms of our infrastructure anticipating this further development?
Well, that's a great question. As you know, we're doing the capacity expansion and modernization projects at Dillman. Our plant is presently rated for 15 million gallons per day. In 2016, we received a letter from IDM warning us that we were nearing the total capacity of that plant on average, and that we should begin work on expanding the plant. That is a long project, and we are expecting to proceed in 2024 with the last phase of that. At the end of that, that project, we will have a capacity at Dillman of 20 million gallons per day. So we're adding another 1/3 again on our capacity. So the, the big projects you've mentioned there, the Sudbury area, and a lot of the area that might be included, should annexation be completed, those areas would all be feeding to the Dillman Plant. So we, we don't anticipate issues with that. There will be issues, not with the plant, but with the infrastructure that takes water to the plant. So we'll be looking at improvements there for that. On the water side, we're doing very well. Water demand has been roughly flat for the last decade, so we don't anticipate any issues there. Our peak day comes in around 20 million gallons per day. Our capacity is 30. And then at the Bluechur Pool Plant, we do anticipate making some capacity enhancements there, mostly adding an equalization basin and possibly a third primary clarifier.
Thank you. I don't have much time remaining, but I wanted to bow out Lake Monroe watershed protection, quality of the water and intake. And I see that you've got certification for pre-treatment coordinator training. What, what's the status of Lake Monroe in terms of the intake right now?
The water quality at Lake Monroe continues to be among the very best raw water sources in the state of Indiana. We are working with Friends of Lake Monroe and the Lake Monroe Water Fund to, to continue the, the deployment of new projects in the watershed to protect our water.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll follow up with that because I was intrigued in your memo with the mention on page 129 of the water supply resiliency, and you're actually looking into a secondary water source. There's been a lot of conversation about Lake Monroe, the quality of the water in Lake Monroe, and the capacity lifespan of that, our only drinking source. So can you talk a little bit about, I mean, this is long-term. This is huge. This is like five to 15 years, a projected look into what other source of water could we develop here? And my question is probably pretty complex, so I'll let you do the talking, but is this something you would work with the Army Corps of Engineers with? Or where would we begin with looking at a secondary source?
Well, actually, we began with some analysis that was done back in 2009, 2010, that actually helped to inform council's decision at the time regarding the Monroe Plant. At that time, it was considered a possibility that we could build a wellfield or build an intake on a different body of water that we would bring water back to town with. That was determined at the time to be too expensive and complex for us at the time, and we proceeded with the expansion of the Monroe Plant. Depending on what you think the future of the lake might be, or what things you're concerned about, for me, it's, I worry about a tornado hitting the water plant. That's what I worry about. But depending, depending on what contingencies you're concerned about, you might look in a lot of different places. So we could look at building our own wellfield on the White River and piping water back to town. We could look into collaborating with another community like Columbus and bringing water back here, or maybe having an exchange agreement. There, there aren't very many communities to work with on that, to be honest. They're just not, they're too far away. We also, as part of the study we did this year, we looked at things like reusing a quarry like they are in Indianapolis. That turns out to be just not enough water. And we could also consider if, if you assume that the lake is going to continue to be viable for the long term, we could just build a second plant at Lake Monroe that could, that would protect us in, you know, the odds of two water plants being hit by the same tornado are pretty low. So we could look at that. So we're, we can look at lots of different things going forward.
And are we about ready to enter funky water season? Can you talk about that a little bit in my remaining 20 seconds?
It is. My hope that there will not be a funky water season this year. As we mentioned last year, the, the, when we get a large algal bloom and the water's been hot for a long time with very little rainfall, it appears that we can get a higher concentration of the taste and odor chemicals than we can actually manage at the plant. We got a nice rain over the weekend, and we noticed that the, I was looking at the data today, and the algal counts are actually lower today than they were last Thursday. So we do, we are monitoring that closely and considering a different kind of activated carbon that could more effectively remove taste and odor, and we expect to deploy those in September.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Councilmember Sims.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelson. The, the budget sheets that came along with your memo in the budget book, each, each of them, water, stormwater, wastewater, show a significant decrease from, if you look at the bottom line expenditures grand total, a significant million, several million dollar decrease compared with the 2023 budget. Is that an error? Because like, for example, in the, if we're looking at the wastewater fund, page 150 of our budget book, it's a difference of $8.6 million when you look at 2024 council requests versus 2023 adopted budget.
I, I can't answer that. That, we, I can review that, but I don't believe that's true. Yeah?
Yeah, it's...
That's not what it should be. We'll, we'll correct them to the table.
Okay, all three, all three funds are like that.
All three of them are like that? Okay.
So the other question, another question I had was about the Devon Lane neighborhood bioretention project. How do neighborhoods get that deal? Because I know other neighborhoods that have had significant flooding, stormwater issues that might want to get in on that. So how was Devon Lane chosen and?
Well, actually, Devon Lane was chosen by coincidence, actually. It was suggested by residents. Actually, I think Councilmember Rallo and Phil and I were all on that tour of the neighborhood looking at problems. And one of the neighbors asked, pointed at the hill over at the Deer Park and wondered if it might be possible. We contacted the Deer Park managers, and they said that they would, they would be happy to house the detention facility there. So we built it in-house. If there is a similar situation where a similar scale project could really benefit a neighborhood, we would certainly consider it as part of our neighborhood program. Not the grant program, as part of our regular neighborhoods program.
Okay, so this was outside of the neighborhood grant program where residents actually get together and apply?
That's right. This was a question about basic infrastructure, which we do. So it had nothing to do with the grant program. But we have a neighborhood program that pays for doing neighborhood improvements, and that's what we did that with.
Okay. I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Mr. Kelson. First thing, and I say this in all honesty, with regard to what Councilmember Piedmont Smith noticed on the differences in your budget total, what she just said, and you said you have to look into it.
Well, there was, I know there were some technical glitches with some of the tables that were copied from one source to another. So it may be associated with that.
Okay. Well, all I was just going to simply ask is that you and your financial folks kind of go through it again and make sure that if, there's no more of them.
We will.
As best as you can. Okay, thank you. And I don't recall us getting the council members, or at least me, a copy of the job evaluation committees, studies on your staffing. And I guess my first question is, after looking at all the staff change requests, what will be your net staff increase?
Next staff change?
I know some are just name changes and no impact, but.
Yeah, most of them are name changes or changing temporary positions to regular positions in the part-time cases. At this point, we don't have any specific plans for additional staffing next year. There may be a couple of cases where a couple of things need to happen, but I don't have any specific plans at this time.
Okay, thank you. And running out of time, I'll send you questions about the K-9. I'd like to hear more information on that. And hopefully, we'll get examples of other training and how effective. Also, I think going with that, you can assume there's significant backups if we're going to need a K-9 or more than I'm aware of. So I just, I'll send you a question, and you can just kind of respond to that. So I'm clear on that. But the last thing I'd like to talk about is your D E I training. Can you talk to us a little bit about that? It seems as though memo reflected to just working with lower income neighborhoods. And I'm thinking more in terms of the overall training we receive through the city and how that's working through your leadership and down through your staff with that. How was that working?
Well, so the thing we're talking about for next year is to continue what we've been doing through the city throughout all of our managers. That has not happened with all of our managers as yet. In terms of the other things we're doing now, one of the big issues that we do is the, is our customer assistance program, which helps people can't pay their water bills.
Okay, now, I don't have that much time. I'm interested in hearing how all of this is filtered down to your entire staff, the D E I training and all of that. We've been doing this for at least a whole year. Now, we're moving on, and it's not trickling down. Not specifically, but I'm not noticing that overall. So I want to make sure that it's not just us managers and that stuff that get the training. It's the people that do the work and out in the field. So thank you, my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambalory?
I'll go ahead with the K-9 question.
Okay.
Could you, could you talk a little bit more about that program? How much it will cost? And what the expectations are? Is it expected that that will realize cost savings? Is it just a better way of doing business? Could you talk about that a little bit?
It's actually some of a lot of things. Obviously, we've never done it before. And we're, at some level, it's somewhat experimental, but we've seen good results from other communities. And I can provide, we've got some brochures and things, some information we can provide, and some web resources you can look at. There are two classes of problems. On the water side, there are lots of small leaks. Some of them are easy to find with ultrasonic methods. Other utilities are finding that some of those can be effectively located by dogs sniffing for the chlorine. So, for example, there may be a service line leaking or something like that that we could pick up in the right-of-way. On the sewer side, about a quarter of the water that makes it to the Dillman plant is actually stormwater that somehow made it into our pipes. Sometimes that comes through significant sized holes in our infrastructure. So smelling the sewer gas might be an effective way to find it, given that it's buried underground. It's not possible to dig up 300 miles of pipe. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to find some of those kinds of locations more effectively. Another class of problems that we're interested in has to do with infrastructure strikes by directional drilling companies and others. So they'll hit, if they hit your lateral, they're working in the right-of-way. So if the company hits your sewer lateral and damages it, it might be a couple of years before you actually experience plugging in the house or sewage coming up at the ground surface. So one of the things we can look into is the prospect for locating sewer line strikes or sewer lateral strikes and letting customers know that they may have a problem that should be looked into, hopefully, while the bond is still in place for the company that was doing the drilling. So we're hopeful that that might be another thing that we could see. At this point, we haven't done it yet. So we'll know more a year from now about how well it works. Altogether, it's in round numbers around $100,000 for everything. The first year, the second year, it's less expensive because all the basic initial purchases will be completed by then. So we're hopeful that it will, that it will find things that will save us money, but also things that will help us to serve our customers better.
Thank you. I'll have some additional questions by email, so.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The street sweeping maintenance and operations, do you sweep everywhere and/or how do you decide where to sweep? And how often does that happen?
We don't, yet. We're commissioning a study to create a street sweeping plan that's oriented towards the MS4 that will be implemented in 2024. So at this point, I don't know exactly where and when and how often, but we will know when the street sweeping plan is completed. And we expect to begin that actual activity in 2024. This year was a transition year to plan for the actual deployment.
Oh, okay. And similarly, a little bit, we have changes in leaf collection for 2024. And is utilities doing any kind of education? Or maybe that is also in conjunction with the rest of the city or the mayor's office in education on keeping leaves out of streets?
It's my understanding that E S D and the mayor's office have been doing a lot of communications about it. When we get questions about it, we do answer the questions. Obviously, we encourage people to keep the leaves out of the street. We always encourage people not to mow their lawns into the street, those kinds of things. And certainly, we don't want people to rake their leaves from the backyard out to the curb if they can, if we can avoid it because that just ends up as plugging in the inlets. We will be paying very close attention as the vacuuming program goes away to see what effect it does have on us. But if the, if the public responds well, we probably won't have too much trouble, but we will be paying attention.
Very good to hear. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay. Okay, with that, we can now go to public comment. So if you are in council chambers and would like to comment, please head up to the podium. And if you are on Zoom and would like to comment, please raise your hand or message in chat. Anything online?
I see no takers on Zoom right now.
Okay. No one here in council chambers, so I think we can go back to council now. If anyone has a final comment for the utilities budget? A lot of shaking heads, no? Okay, let's then.
All right. I move that the council recommends inclusion of the utilities budget as presented within the relevant salary ordinance and appropriation ordinance for consideration.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That is eight yes, zero no, so that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Fire Department with Chief Moore. 20 minutes, so welcome, Chief Moore, and you can begin.
Good evening, Council. Jason Moore, Fire Chief. As we always start, why do we exist? We do exist to provide excellent public safety. I would point out that it's through prior prevention, public education. We added integrated healthcare. We also have the emergency management mitigation. For our background, we are currently at 115.5 employees. I will point out that earlier this year, we were talking about our staffing crisis where we were down 21 positions. We're down currently four positions. So currently, I would say of those that we have hired, 10 are still in training and are not going to help the operational side of our department yet. But we do only have four vacancies. We do operate with five divisions, operations, the big red trucks. Training and education is how we prepare for the calls. Prevention, obviously, is what we go out and do to prevent the calls. Investigation happens after. And then our integrated healthcare program, which is out serving the community, some of the ones that are most in need. So some of our major initiatives, community risk reduction, that's really big in our department now. It has been since I've been here. But focusing on that of how can we help prevent? Because we are starting to see increases in calls that are not sustainable. And I will just put in reference, as of July this year, we ran as many calls as we ran in the entire year of 2016. We have innovative emergency response, workforce diversification. We are working on the station renovations. Some of you may have seen it. Most of the stations are either underway with remodels, have some remodels completed, or we're in the design stages with the bonds that were issued so that we can go ahead and start those projects. We are still working on the capital replacement plan. Just a reminder, we're on cycle two. We're not completely out of the woods yet until our reserve fleet is good as well, but we are working on that. We also have the enhanced employee training and education. And obviously, last but certainly not least, is firefighter safety and health. Emergency operations, we have a lot of things that we are doing. You'll see that we've checked off one of the goals, continuing capital replacement plan. We did purchase the engine that was for the 2023 year. I will say that this has added a new challenge, our replacement cycle. We do appreciate the support on that. But we're also now finding out that a new fire truck can take 900 days to be delivered. So that is something that was not planned when we built our replacement plan that we're having to deal with. We're also working on the appropriate response. We'll get into that a little bit more with the 2024 goals. And we're also continuing all the renovation projects and obviously, still working with our community partners. For fire prevention, we have smoke detector installations. We meet that goal every year. That is based on data, that we built a study of where they were most needed. That study proved to be very reliable, and we're using that. We are the furthest along in our general inspection goal that we have ever been. That does come with the support that we've added a new deputy fire marshal, which we recently hired, and they're out getting these inspections done. We did add a goal of the business plan review or the building plan review to having them out within 10 days. As you can imagine, there are a lot of developments in Bloomington, and we want to make sure we're doing our part to not delay those processes. For training and education, we ensure every one of our employees receives diversity ed, diversity and inclusion training. Maintaining our training hours, that is an annual goal. That is just to maintain our skill sets. And then we're also going to be providing instruction for 40 new certifications. Investigations, we maintain the minimum continuing ed. We also have the professional memberships. And I will outline that that's kind of important. We're starting to see fires that we have not seen in the past with things like a lot of battery powered things that are happening. You're starting to see burn patterns, things that our investigators were not used to seeing. So having these networks and having this professional education is really important for them. The community care, our integrated healthcare, as you can see, here are four. We already expanded by adding the two new. And we also evaluated the feasibility of establishing billing service through insurance. I know that may or may not be a popular thing, but it is something that we constantly do look at. It is not allowable under state law. So again, we'll just keep seeing if it is something that could be allowed. So moving into 2024, we want to continue to provide those excellent services with the appropriate response times. We have these broken down into the fire, the emergency medical, and all other calls. For fire, we have the turnout time, which is from the time that we receive the call until we're on the truck. We're trying to make that 80 seconds or less. The travel time, which is from the time we get on the truck until we arrive, is four minutes or less. And the travel time for that T R F or Total Response Force is eight minutes or less. I would like to point out that that's what makes municipal service successful. It's not just how quickly you get there, it's how quickly you get there with enough resources. For medical, they have less time to get on the truck because they do not have to put on all the extra gear. And the travel time is still within the four minutes. All emergency, all other emergency calls, turnout time is 80 seconds. Again, this is everything from car accidents to the downed power lines, you name it. We, most of the time, have to put on the gear. Travel time is a little bit longer because we're starting to see these types of calls in areas that we're not necessarily in position to take care of. And those are being highlighted more and more as the call volume goes up. So we also are continuing our quality assurance program. So this looks at 100% of the calls that require second alarm greater. For the reference of everyone here, second alarm or greater is if the initial alarm assignment, so if we send three engines and an aerial, if that's not enough to handle it, we request second alarm. So that means essentially, it's a very large incident in our community. We also will be doing that if it involves a fatality or firefighter near miss. Again, we're trying to capture lessons learned. We're also reviewing 10% of emergency medical calls that require an intervention. So we go on a lot of calls that we get there, take vitals, wait for an ambulance, things like that. But if we do something where we have to administer a medication, do something to help stabilize the situation, again, just making sure that we're following the protocols, doing what we're supposed to, and having good patient outcomes. For the emergency operations, we do have a goal to fill the Assistant Chief of Operations in the first quarter. And obviously, we want to continue our efforts to work with our community partners. So for fire prevention and investigation, we have had this goal. It's been an unwritten goal. I think the fire service, we have this everywhere, but we've actually put it in writing to maintain zero fire cause fatalities. We want to continue with the general inspections. Again, that's how we help keep buildings from becoming fire hazards. There is a self-inspection program we're hoping to have online this year. We will want to make adjustments to that program. And that is really targeted at the low hazard type occupancies that don't require an inspector to view or visit every single year. We want to continue to make those in-person contacts with the K through 12 schools. It's the foundation of every prevention program. If you teach the children, they grow up, and then they have some sort of sense of fire prevention and education as they become adults. Again, we want to continue with our business plan, or I'm sorry, our plan review, building plan review. We want to facilitate two fire safety sponsored events with IU. They are one quarter of the city. They are a significant portion of our call volume. And we have found that having bigger education events with them pays out dividends and reduce calls. We want to continue installing smoke detectors or replacing batteries so that people do get out and give us a chance to not only put out the fire, but to ensure that they live should there be a fire. We'll continue with the continuing education and professional memberships. And then we'll get into training and education. Again, this is what we do to prepare for all of these calls. I want to point out that a lot of these are very redundant. We have the same goals every year. The standards don't. We have the same goals every year, the standards don't change. But I do want to point out that you'll see a new one, 16 hours of technical rescue. We have had a renewed sense, and we have had an actual rescue this year in a confined space. We have cranes, we have elevator shafts. We have a lot of hazards that are becoming more and more of where we need to be for calls. And then also with the loss of some of our senior personnel, we need to redevelop and rebuild these technical capabilities so we continue to provide those services that our citizens expect. We'll continue with the diversity inclusion training. We'll host the two classes taught by an outside instructor. One thing that I think is important is not only paying attention to our community, but paying attention to the fire service in general. By doing that, by having outside instructors come in, it's hopefully to help keep us in touch with what's going on. Things like hybrid vehicles, battery-powered vehicles, new construction, you name it. It's happening everywhere, not just Bloomington. And there's a lot of great instructors out there that can help prevent and help us learn so that we are not putting ourselves at risk. We do want to continue providing instruction. I will say that that goal may not be appropriate, we may need to increase it. As we have had the increased turnover, it's not just the initial training, how to become a firefighter. There is a lot of training that goes into becoming a driver, then an officer, a chief officer, and so on and so forth. So that 40 new was kind of based on our projected turnover rates in the past. Knowing that we just hired a class of 20, we're going to have to keep up, and we're going to have to increase the number of certifications. A lot of people don't realize, I think we have currently to date 68 payable certifications. So as you go up in the fire service, you have to have the foundation of firefighter and work your way up. And then there's the specialty certifications if you want to be able to do trench rescue or other things like that. Our integrated healthcare, that is our MIH, or Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program. We want to hire and train the three new community EMTs by the first quarter. Our current program, within 10 months of its inception, has been credited with saving three lives in our community already. Each of our community EMTs are about at peak client capacity, which for us is about 10 to 12 active clients per person per month. We did get our 100th referral to the program. And to date, we have graduated a lot of people out of that program. It is a mutual graduation where both the client and/or patient in our community EMTs say, you have the care you need now, we can disengage. And to date, we have not had any of those turn back around and turn into mass users of 911. So a lot of success in that program. We will continue to reevaluate the feasibility. I think what's important to say about this is today, we are actually kind of a pass-through billing with IU Health. We go on a medical call, we use something to help serve or save somebody. We just get a new one from the ambulance, and then they end up billing the patient for it. We are not contacting the ambulance service, we don't have that. So things that we go out and use on these calls, all we're looking for is reimbursement from the insurance company. We would never charge a citizen for this service. We want to identify and apply for at least one alternative funding source. We really pay attention to not only the state, but the national spectrum on this. The governor does have this as one of his priority initiatives for the upcoming year, is to help support mobile integrated healthcare, to help with Hoosiers that have funding gaps or other gaps of service for their healthcare needs. And then we also want to provide the initial and continuing education for all of our personnel. So some highlights, our total budget request is a little over $18 million. That is an overall increase of 11%. Again, year-to-year, our things fluctuate quite a bit. Like last year, we bought an engine. This upcoming year, we're going to be looking at an aerial, which is quite a bit more expensive. We'll get into details of each category. For category one, it's $12.3 million, that is an increase of 6%. That does have essentially a 5% raise for all fire department employees. The contract for the firefighters is 2%. There's a 3% bonus that would bring them to the 5%. And that is calculated on their base rate plus the bonus they got this year, the additional 5% on top of that. We are looking to add the four positions that we've already discussed earlier in the year, the three community EMTs or paramedics, and the one Assistant Chief of Operations. For category two, it looks like a really big increase. This is just somewhat of an accounting change. You would notice things like the firefighting gear, the ITS replacement, physical fitness equipment, things like that used to be in our category four. Each individual item of gear is not $10,000. The controller's office asked us to move all those things into category two. These are things that were normally in our 10-year plan that are now moved into that category. So it does look like a very big increase, but it is essentially where we normally take it from and just moving it. For category three, there is $2.6 million, it's an increase of 4%. We've actually made a lot of reductions, but just contract price increases on our cloud-based systems, our reporting systems, just the utility bills, anything like that. Those increases are in there. And I will say, probably the biggest increases you'll see in that is we have additional staff maintaining the additional funds for training and travel so that they can get the training they need was important. For category four, which is always our biggest line items, we do have a replacement for truck one at $1.75 million. I will point out two things about this. When we replaced truck one previously, it was at 1.5. The 1.75 is actually going to downsize that truck. So currently, it's a 100-foot aerial platform, that's the one that has the really big bucket on the front. We have had to replace the undercarriage on that truck too many times for it being brand-new because of the hard turnout of the station. So we will be replacing it with a 100-foot straight aerial, which is a single axle, and it will definitely not have the issues that we've been having with the larger truck. And it will also help with some of the pedestrian-friendly areas that we're creating downtown for maneuverability. We're looking to replace two of the SUVs, and then we're adding the new response SUV for the new Assistant Chief of Operations. We do have some facility maintenance projects, the $150,000 for Station 1.3 and Training Logistics. Again, the physical brick-and-mortar facilities are funded by the bond, but we do have some, what we refer to as soft costs on those projects. We are looking at, and I'm just going to be hopeful, we did get estimates from the construction folks that Station 1 may be actually up and running by next year. Not two years like we originally anticipated. So this funding is necessary so that we can get not only a beautiful building built, but then we can have it furnished and start with all the other things that need to happen. For Station 2 and Station 5, their projects are really along that diversity-inclusion line. The last portions of those stations that need to be remodeled are the restroom facilities. They are currently group facilities. This will allow us to go in and reconfigure them so that they're unisex bathrooms, individualized bathrooms and showers, and get away from the group mentality so that it's welcoming for all genders in the fire department. The $80,000 for Station 4, if you've seen Station 4, it's gotten an up facelift on the outside. The inside's gotten a lot more. The $80,000 is just to replace the concrete on the last side. So it has new concrete on one side, the old concrete's on the other. This is to fix that. So again, overall, it's an $18 million budget. It does come from general fund, economic development lit, and the public safety lit. And that would be, again, an overall increase of 11%. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. We will go Councilmember Sims and then Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Chief Moore. I'm still trying to wrap my head around the community EMT and the feasibility that we, or that their insurance may be billed. And so have we thought that through? And what about folks who do not have insurance? And what's the equity there?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, that to me is a basic city service that we're now, it's like low-hanging fruit, and we're trying to pick it up and increase our coffers. So just tell me what you think about that, please.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. You know, you get into the idea of taxation and then billing. What this is, is just to recoup, right? So we provide this service to everyone. If someone has insurance, there are methodologies in other states that they use this, where they try to recoup some of those costs. This is never going to come out of a citizen's pocket. This is like the Medicare/Medicaid reimbursements that the hospital and others receive just for when someone calls 911 and has no insurance. If it is an issue with the council, we can discontinue that. But again, this is a way to help make these programs more sustainable.
Okay, thank you. And I can't speak for my colleagues, but no, that's something I cannot support. And to recoup costs where we've already provided revenues for those things, that just don't quite seem fair. You also talked about firefighter near misses, that you study that and hopefully avoid some things in the future. What are examples of that? And how intense is that? If you almost have an accident, then what is the scrutiny there? And what are we even talking about here?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. It brings up a great point. The best example I can give is actually this year. Had an apartment complex, a very small one, by the way, in comparison to what's being built in Bloomington. Had two firefighters put in the hospital. Not a death, not anything that was, you know, career-ending, but we definitely dig into those issues and try to determine what was the cause, what was the issue, and then how can we prevent it in the future. As far as the scrutiny, we scrutinize anything that might jeopardize the safety of our firefighters very heavily. Getting into, is it an issue with the plan review, the way the buildings are built? Is it a firefighter training issue? You name it, that's where we're at.
Okay, and I'm running out of time. Just an example, if you have a unit that's turning on Seventh Street, where the Seventh Street line is, and there's a near miss, I'll ask questions about that later, because there seems to be a lot of those. Lastly, 100% of your staff will receive diversity and inclusion training? In 10 seconds, explain that to us, please, if you can. And I'm interested in how it gets all the way to the, from top to bottom, not just here.
Right. We have several levels. There's the program that you were participating with, with us as department heads. That's coming down through the management. We also have from the bottom up, we have two online training systems, and we do have a diversity educator that we bring in every two years to do in-person classes.
Okay, thank you. My time's up. I'll ask more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So my question involves facilities, looking into the future, anticipating the build-out that I directed the question to Director Kelson a few minutes ago. So we're anticipating a 6,000-unit build-out in the Sudbury area. That area was, if memory serves, was... We were anticipating a fire station there, built by TIF funds as early as 2002 in sub-area plans of the growth policy plan then. And there have been thousands of units built there. We're anticipating 6,000 more. Most of the fire stations are on the east side of town. What do you say about the need for another station there? And how soon?
I can't give a date. You'll notice in our 10-year plan, it has been in there since I've been the chief, that there is a new Station 6 and 7, which was for the southeast and southwest stations. With this current development, we are in discussions with them allocating the land for the fire station, and even working with parks where we can have a trailhead, restroom facilities, things like that, cohabitated with that station. This will be a problem for the next administration to address with the new mayor. Knowing that the annexation is still looming, that also opens questions that we may need to deal with, not only that southwest, but also the southeast side of the city as well.
I'm concerned that it should be done concurrently. What do you think with the build-out of this area? In other words, do we wait until we have, you know, a need that's going to stress the system? Or do we preemptively anticipate it and at least build it as the phases are progressing in this development?
I love the question, and I think this comes down to a term of priorities. I would love to have everything in place beforehand, but that's not always possible with all the other city priorities. So what I would say is, if money was not a limit and we could do anything we want, I'd love to start building and figuring out how we're going to staff that station immediately. But that's just not where we're at today.
Okay, I have a little time. The community EMTs, you talked about clients. Are these people that are identified preemptively, that then establish a relationship with the community EMTs that are available to them? Is that how it works?
Yeah, so our number-one refer to it is the firefighters themselves. So it used to be, we would dig through the records, and if we'd been to someone multiple times, that was generating the client list. And now our firefighters are getting very good at identifying the things that we can help with. And they're doing referrals, which we've automated through the reporting system that they use to write out their reports. We also get community referrals from other entities, but it is a growing and very successful program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scambalory?
I'm interested in hearing more about the relationship between City of Bloomington Resources and the university. You mentioned that a significant proportion of our call volume comes from IU. Could you be more specific? Could you give us a sense of what percentage of calls come from IU buildings? With the understanding that a lot of IU students live in the community, so...
Right. I'd look up the percentages to give you an exact number. It's not quite representative of the 25% of the city that IU roughly makes up. But the vast majority of the calls we go there are for false alarms and for medical calls. A lot of people have gotten upset of that in the past, and I would just say that you have more false alarms in buildings that have more alarm systems. IU, almost every building on IU's campus is alarmed, which does lead to that triggering. But I would be more than happy to get the exact numbers to you after this.
Okay, please do. And what are some examples of the IU-sponsored fire safety events that you talked about? You had a goal of doing at least two of those. What would be some examples of that?
Yeah, we've got a couple of great ones. We do the Grey Escape. So that is something that we've targeted with the resident advisor group that comes in, where we simulate fire conditions, so we bring smoke in a building, teach them why it's important to teach new residents coming in about counting doors to the exit and other things like that. We have brought in, IU paid for and brought in, some spokespersons who had survived a dormitory fire. And the year we did that, normally we see the students come up and our calls go up. That year, it actually dipped down. So programs like that are things that we would love to get in front of the IU students. I would also say that when I got here, we had no input on the intake of students and the safety curriculum they received. And we are now a part of those conversations, and they do get safety information directly from us. If I had a wish list, the one thing I wish we could teach is probably some cooking safety, believe it or not. Just how to use a microwave, make sure you put ramen and water together before you cook it, things like that.
Maybe there's a handout there or something that could be used. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Chief Moore. Can you tell us a little more about the new Assistant Chief of Operations and why that's a needed position?
Absolutely. It is a position I've asked for, for I believe, five, going on six years. Currently, we have three shifts. They kind of operate a little differently. As we have become younger with less experience, the necessity to go ahead and get all three shifts on the same page, to have additional oversight, we talked about things like the quality assurance program. Currently, we are at capacity of analyzing those calls. And again, we are seeing more calls than we've ever seen in the past. So this person would be directly responsible for looking at all of those calls, making sure reports are complete, making sure that we're following the safety protocols. They'll make recommendations on the operational standard operating guidelines. We currently have the administrative operating guidelines. We have very few of the operational standard operating guidelines. Basically, the playbook of how we want to operate. Knowing that we have to get more into the technical rescue, this person will be directly responsible for recreating that program and engaging that, making sure it's done safely. And then last, but certainly not least, they will function as the health and safety officer for our department. So we have safety officers on the squad for the incident. But the health and safety officer is a broader goal. It's the OSHA compliance. It's, you know, making sure that we're doing the correct things for our firefighters and making sure that it's as safe as it can be.
Great. And is this a typical position that other departments of this size have in the country?
Absolutely. Just to put it in perspective, our neighboring department has 14 chief officers. That would put us at, let's see, eight? So we're at seven, that would put us at eight chief officers to run the department. But yes, it is very similar. In fact, it would mirror more of what BPD has, where they have the chief, the deputy, and the operational and admin captain. That's very similar for us, to make sure that we have a little bit of span of control on maintaining all sides of our programs.
Thank you. And in the time I have left, can you tell us more about the Station 1 replacement or renovation?
Absolutely. So currently, the designs are at 100%. We are working on the bid documents themselves. We do anticipate those to go out probably around September. Current estimates put construction anywhere from eight to 12 months. So that's why we're excited. We may actually be in the station before the end of next year. And I would also say that as it's projected now, it is under budget. So on time or below time and under budget, it's not something you hear in government very often. But that is where that project is. If I may, just really elaborate on Station 3 and the logistics. I've got... If I may, just really elaborate on Station 3 and the logistics, I've got one second, I can just put it real easily. Everything else is just in the conceptual design phase right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Chief Moore. Appreciate all you do and, and your staff. You said something that, all of a sudden, it took me a minute to process, so if, when you do calls on the campus, are, are, is our, are we being compensated, or, I mean, is, are you being compensated, your department, when we go on campus and do things? Is there like any reimbursement that's done when that happens? Do you go out and, you know, a lot of false calls, or whatever?
Yeah, so, what I would say is, there's not an official inter-local agreement, but there is an agreement between the city and IU. I would have to look at it to be specific, but I believe, if you'll see in our revenue, it's somewhere in the realm of about $1.5 or $1.6 million of what IU pays. It's about the equivalent of what the staff cost for the 15 personnel that are at the IU station. So, that, that's all we receive from IU, no matter what the call volume is.
Yeah. Is that, is that a fair amount? Can I ask you that?
I believe it's the amount that was agreed upon. I would say that IU does not have their own fire department, that it would be significantly more for them to stand up their own fire department, and to provide the level of service that we provide.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, now, we can go to public comment. Thank you so much, Chief Moore. If anyone in council chambers would like to comment, please come up to the podium, and if anyone online would like to comment, please raise your hand or message in the chat.
We do have a taker on Zoom, Jordan.
Hi, Jordan, please state your name, and you'll have two minutes.
Jordan Canada, Union President, Logan Fire. When it comes to firefighter salaries, VFT is the lowest paid in the county, and even lower when compared to other similar departments within the state. As we appreciate the one-time bonuses, we must still acknowledge the fact that even with the bonuses, we're still the lowest paid in Monroe County, and paid less than more than half the departments in the state, despite being the sixth-largest city by population. Yesterday, non-union employees received 304 hours of PTO. A firefighter would need to work 26 hours, or 26 years, to receive 304 hours of PTO. The term equitable is used often, however, things don't seem equitable for all city employees. It doesn't seem equitable to people such as Clerk Bolden, ASME members, police officers, former Chief Washell, current Battalion Chief, Deputy Chief, and firefighters. Firefighters are highly trained ISO-1, that have been and currently are being recruited by departments that are paying market value and benefits that match market value. Those two things are lacking here within the city. Again, we're the sixth-largest city, second-most expensive city to live in, we're the best-trained, as mentioned by John Hamilton, often touting our ISO-1 status. He said the department has managed, lead, and share annual reversions with each department. Can this not be turned into an annual bonus for the firefighters? I urge the City Council, as stated yesterday evening by Stephen Lucas, to utilize their authority to fix the salaries for the fire department. This is needed to make us a competitive fire department within the county. Public safety is unique and important, but we need to be prioritized and stabilized. We can only succeed with the support from this City Council. If we do not see significant change, the effects will continue, and the lack of prepared staff can become a safety issue for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other commenters online?
No, not that I see.
Okay. With that, we can go back to council. Any final comments on the fire? Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I think this Integrated Healthcare Initiative is excellent, and I appreciate the update that there have been many so-called graduations from the program, where people who frequently had called 911 are now on a more stable basis, and have ongoing medical help or other help that they need, and therefore are not as much of a strain on our emergency services. So, I very much appreciate the initiative to create the program and support continued funding for it. I also wanted to just acknowledge the smaller size of the truck that is in the capital budget for next year, because of the problems with the turning radius. I appreciate there was not a request to widen roads, but instead, a right sizing of the truck, and I hope you can get that more quickly than 900 days. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I think this is a good budget, and I appreciate the work, Chief Moore, that you and your staff do. I think it might be helpful for us to have some data of other second-class cities in terms of their compensation for firefighters, to make sure that we're maintaining parity with those. Perhaps we can reach out to HR and evaluate other, other comparators. So, but otherwise, I appreciate your work, and I am concerned about, by the way, another station in the near future, hopefully, hopefully before the need arises. Thank you.
Any other comments? I will just say briefly, I have almost the same notes as Councilmember Piedmont Smith on this. I recently did a ride-along with the fire department, although I did not get to ride-along because there were no emergencies, thank goodness. I did, though, get to spend a good amount of time with one of the community EMTs, and it really does sound like the work they're doing in the community, they're getting to know their patients, and I heard some stories where people's lives were being saved because of those relationships that were being forged. So, I think that is a very impressive program, and I am glad we have it. So, with that, entertain a motion.
Yes, I move that the council recommends inclusion of the fire department budget as presented within the relevant salary ordinance and appropriation ordinance for consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll? Councilmember Sims?
Abstain.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambl, or no, Sandberg?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Scamblory?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That passes 602, and our final budget presentation of the night is the fire, is the police department, sorry about that. Welcome, Chief DeKoff. You have 20 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mike DeKoff, I'm the Police Chief for the City of Bloomington. Why we exist, the mission of the Bloomington Police Department is safeguard life and property while respecting diversity, encouraging civility, solving problems, and maintaining a high standard of individual integrity and professionalism. This is our mission statement, we have this posted in the department, people see it every day. Our authorized strength, we're authorized 105 sworn officers and 78 non-sworn employees. You can see the breakdown of the officers employed, sworn officers employed, and the number available, that is due to the openings that we have within the sworn ranks, and the difference between the available and employed are those who are either in training at the academy, those that are in the FTO program, or those that are off on long-term sick or illness. Breakdown of each division, for Patrol Division, there are 84 authorized, we have 60 available. The Detective Division, 16 authorized, 12 available. Admin, five and five, and civilian are non-sworn, which is 78 and 61 available. 23 major, 2023 major accomplishments, we hired a joint police-fire recruiting specialist that works both with, with both public safety departments to find recruits that would be interested in a public safety job. We hired three of the four community service specialists that were in the budget for this year. We're still working on hiring a social worker, we've had a couple of processes, and have not found one yet for dispatch. We continue to, our investment in best-practice alternatives to lethal force encounters, we are always looking at least less lethal options. There's recently been discussions about tasers, we are moving forward with that, and hopefully we'll have an announcement about that in the next, the next few weeks. And we are focused on retention of current employees with a variety of incentive programs that we have, to kind of just highlight those. We have up to $100,000 in payment assistance for homes that are purchased within the city. We have a $750 a month rental assistance for officers living in the city. We have individual-issued patrol vehicles for officers who are living in the city. We also have a $5,000 hiring bonus for lateral transfers, and a $3,000 hiring bonus for all other sworn personnel. Our goals, we have 14 goals for 2024, divided into six categories, these are the categories that we'll be talking about. Increasing the community's sense of safety, our goal is to reduce overall crimes, including burglaries, robberies, and thefts by 3% in '24 compared to '23. We continue to emphasize de-escalation and less lethal force options during use-of-force incidents, as per ICAT, which is a national evidence-based training program that is put on by the Police Executive Research Forum. We have put, we currently have two instructors, and we put all of our officers through three-day training blocks, and we also incorporate this training throughout the year in the other various types of trainings that we do. And we continue, continued with de-escalation training for all sworn employees, including the new state mandates. The State of Indiana recently passed some new mandates on use of force and pursuits. The use-of-force policy basically standardizes what departments are able to do. Departments are not able to alter that statewide policy. It is set in statute, which we are required to follow. And then the pursuit policy, basically, we met all of what the state put in the policy, it's just basically standardizing a lot of the stuff surrounding pursuits. Talk a little, a little bit about gun crimes. So, we are part of the, get the title right here. The New City-County Gun Violence Prevention Task Force, which is a group of city, county, and nongovernmental employees, all working together to reduce gun violence in our community. Some of the things that we're doing is enhance forensic investigations at crime scenes, so when we have a shooting incident, we are collecting evidence such as bullet casings, bullets, and we are sending those to the federal government for enhanced forensic evaluation, so that it helps us determine who might be involved in those shootings and link them to other shootings, so that we can, we can follow and make arrests in those. Red flag filings, those are people who have mental health issues that shouldn't be possessing firearms, and when we encounter someone that is in a situation like that, we do file those red flag filings to try to get the weapons removed from the households of those people. We're also focusing on directed patrols in areas where data and crime analysis show emerging trends and patterns. Kind of going back to the gun, gun violence reduction, we have certain areas of city, of the city where we have more shots fired called, so we are focusing on those areas to try to bring down some of those, those crimes, and make, make the community feel safer in those areas. We're, we're broadening the hours of the community service specialists to offer greater coverage. Since we increased those last year with this, or we increased it with this year's budget, we're extending their hours so that they work later during the days and into the evenings, so that they can help respond to minor calls. And we're also increasing the downtown resource officers. We had six full-time officers, when we started that program, we're down to one full-time officer now. And so what we're doing is, we are selecting officers that can do that job in a part-time capacity to help fill kind of the times where we're more busy, that the DROs are needed. Kalia, we just, last year, got our second full accreditation. We just, last week, completed the first phase of the 54 standards that get reviewed every year as part of that ongoing process, and we had no issues with that from Kalia. Central Dispatch, again, we have some openings there, and we're trying to hire and train dispatchers for all those positions. We are in the process of working on a national accreditation process through Kalia for our dispatch center, and we are actually moving along with that process quite well, where we've got a lot of the standards and SOPs already completed. We're setting in place the diversion of some calls for service with the hiring of the social worker. When we get that person hired, we expect to see a percentage of the calls that normally might get dispatched will be diverted and handled without actually having a sentient officer. We're also evaluating, evaluating the 911 calls to determine best responding resources. You recently might have been aware of the 911 Review Committee. Some of those recommendations are calling for a study to evaluate how dispatch operates, and so that, that is in the budget, and we're also looking at hiring a nurse to help divert calls for EMS and fire calls. We continue the process on the construction of Showers West. We are still in the design phase of that project, where we are working with the architects literally weekly on updating the drawings, to make sure that we get everything that we need for that. And we're also continuing with the annual replacement cycle of equipment in the department. Category 1 Personnel, $19,390,633 requested. It's about a 6% increase, that's basically due to contractual raises. Supplies has actual decrease of $27,000-plus dollars, and that's because of one-time purchases that we did last year that we don't need this year. Category 3 has an increase of $439,000. That has got money in it for the, one of the bond payments for Showers West, and also for the 911 study, and it also includes other increases to services and actual costs that we're, we're paying. Category 4 has a 26% reduction, and again, that is due to just, we did a major overhaul of our firing range this year. It was costly, it was a 15-year rehab, and that's not in the budget, not needed anymore, so that's why there's a decrease there. Total fund, with all the funds requested, $24,743,136, which is a 2% increase over this year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that very succinct presentation. Okay, we will start to my left with Councilmember Rallo, followed by Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, a quick question. So, the personnel, we've got 105 funded, 84 employed, 77 available. I assume this means that it requires overtime to fill patrol needs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My question has to do with recruiting. I'm very concerned that a lot of the efforts are about bringing in non-sworn personnel when we have such a gap in our, in our police department. Let me, let me just start by, I understand from hearing the HR report, that the new recruit person that's been hired to recruit both police and fire, has really only been on the job since when? April? But my question is, how many has he brought in? Lateral hires, new recruits, do we have any stats on, is he making any inroads in bringing in new officers, sworn officers, not the non-sworn personnel?
I, I don't have those numbers for you, but I can get those for you.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, I can do that.
Now, I know we're losing a lot of officers to other jurisdictions, to other police departments. I read recently, or someone informed me, that the state police have now really up their salaries. Have we lost any Bloomington police officers to the State of Indiana?
We have not yet lost any.
Not yet?
You're exactly correct. There are more than just the state police, other agencies across the state continue to raise their salaries, and it makes it hard for us to keep the employees that we have, but we're, we're still working, try to do that, and, and keep the incentives there, and. But we're still working, try to do that and keep the incentives there and keep the employees that we have.
And we know that salaries are not the only reason why police stay in a good department like this. This $100,000 for homes, you know, if they will move into the city of Bloomington, how is that being funded? I'm not sure council ever got a clear answer as to, are there banks underwriting that? Or, you know, what is the mechanism to try to use that as an enticement tool?
So I'm sure you'll appreciate the fact that I am not involved in the actual financing of those programs. I don't know exactly how that financing is set up. I'm just the end user, trying to get that money to use it towards hiring people.
That will be helpful information for someone, the controller or someone, to provide because I'm very concerned about, that's a lot of, you know, money. And I think five people expressed an interest in it. But has anyone actually bitten and applied for that?
If you hang on, I have a sheet on that.
I think someone made the comment, I don't know if it was in the opening salvo, about five individuals expressing an interest. But I mean, that is not exactly concrete evidence that that enticement is actually a good recruiting or retention tool.
Kind of a breakdown of the incentives we have right now. We have one person that has taken advantage of the housing incentive prior to the $100,000, when there was one that was $18,000 over two years. We have one person that has taken advantage of that. We have 14 people currently taking advantage of the rental assistance program. So that's kind of a breakdown of where we are.
And that's my time, but I have other questions. Hopefully, I can get a second or third bite. Thanks.
Okay, and now we have Councilmember Sims, followed by Councilmember Scambulary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief DeKoff, and first thing I do want to say, and this is for Chief Moore as well, I neglected to say, thank you both for your service. We've worked with you over the years and I'll be the first to admit that we don't always agree. But I do appreciate the civility in which we discuss these things through. So, thank you. Now, having said that, let's get, no, no, no. Chief Moore stated that the talent acquisition manager and what his, now, this isn't about him. It's about the position and results. And he stated that he has, or that position has already exceeded BFD's expectations. What are your thoughts with regard to BPD?
So I think our hiring, no offense to the fire chiefs, probably a little bit more specialized because of the academy, the statewide academy and the state mandated training is a little bit more, I think, strict. It's, I don't know that we've recognized a lot of success from it yet. But I also think it's still early and we're still working on trying to put together a program that will appeal to the people that we're trying to recruit. I'm hopeful he's been helpful, you know, with, working with our employees that do our recruiting. I just, I think we're just kind of on the verge really of getting it going more robustly than it has been because of, you know, him learning the job and learning what our needs are and things like that. It's just, it just takes a little bit of time.
Okay, correct. Thank you. And with regard to dispatch, and in particularly that nurse, a proposed nurse position. One of, one of the things is, over the years, we've added a whole lot of different positions throughout the city. I mean, we've just grown and grown. But my specific question about the nurse is, how is that supposed to help with the time to get to emergencies? And I don't, I'm not sure how that works. Is the nurse kind of quiz the person that's calling, which to me would extend the time?
Yeah.
It's what I'm saying. So how, and I know we haven't done it yet, but what are your thoughts on that?
So I'll be honest, that is, Dave DeKit, the Innovation Director, worked on that with both the fire chief and myself. And she probably has a much better understanding of it than I do. The goal, I think, is to look at the calls for service that are coming in to the 911 center and seeing if there's a way for a nurse to maybe triage those. There's a lot, I think, that we still need to explore. But it's, I mean, if it's something that, you know, will be useful and help divert calls, then it's something that we're willing to explore. But I don't know, I'm not quite sure yet how all the details are going to be because it's really just so new.
Okay, thank you. My time's up. I'll send her questions about that. I'm concerned a little bit. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief DeKoff. I had some questions about the nurses program too, but it sounds like Ms. Kid would be in a better position to answer those, or?
Unless the fire chief knows more about it, he might.
Just in particular, I'm curious, you talked about calls that prompted that. I'm wondering what led us to conclude that adding a nurse to dispatch is a good idea? And how much will that cost and so forth?
Great. Thanks for the question. Again, Jason Moore, Fire Chief. I was on the committee that reviewed these things. When you look at the growing calls, like I mentioned, ours have doubled since 2016. There are a lot of medical calls that do not require an ambulance, that we are sending an ambulance and a fire truck to. So not only have the entire total 911 calls come in, gone up, I think we're at over 100,000. But I think the point is, is with the higher level medical in dispatch, if it's not a life safety critical, someone is going to die, then that nursing protocol exists within the ProQA that we have already purchased with fire, police, and EMS. It's an add-on. It is something that is already done in other communities and it is actually more prevalent in Europe than it is in the U.S. And what it does look to do, again, is strip out calls that do not require that to hopefully divert, so that we are diverting them before they even hit the tones and sending a firefighter or an ambulance out on those calls.
Diverted to who?
A lot of them can be diverted to primary care. It can be told, you know, again, I'll just, an example of this is, literally had one the other day for a splinter. Now, our department doesn't go on that. Some departments do, but an ambulance was dispatched for a splinter. And that is, a 911 call was made and it can only be answered that way. We can't just say, well, we're not going to go. And the ambulance service is in the same way. So you're seeing more and more reliance on 911 for primary medical needs. These programs generally couple in with someone like transit for, on-demand transit for someone that can't get to a doctor, can't go to an urgent care. And then this can pair very well with mobile integrated healthcare of helping people find healthcare resources they need.
Thank you.
That's, the nurse is more EMS, fire, not police. So I'm, that's why the fire chief's probably better suited to answer that question.
And I just have a little bit of time left. But I understand, I want to dive into these incentives just a little bit more for recruitment and retention. I understand that officers will vote with their feet. You know, they will, they will either go or stay depending on these kinds of incentives and will choose the incentives that meet their needs. How are we getting feedback from officers about which, what kinds of incentives will actually work?
That's a good question. We've got, I've attended myself different recruiting and hiring things to look at, you know, how these things work. Incentives, sometimes, you know, depending upon the training, some places say incentives work, some say incentives don't. It's a different, it's a different generation that we're hiring today than when I started. And, you know, a lot of people, a lot of younger people that are getting into this profession are more interested in time off and what the community has to offer and things like that. So.
Yeah, I'm at my time. That's my fault. So.
Okay. Right now, with my voice, the less I have to talk, the better.
Thank you, Chief DeKoff. Sorry about the time limits. So I have just a kind of an overreaching question. In your memo, in our budget packet, you say, "The department is focused on responding to the overall public safety needs of the city of Bloomington using a combination of officers, community service specialists, and social workers." So responding to the overall public safety needs, do you feel that the police is able to and is the appropriate and only body to respond to the community's public safety needs?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last part of it again?
Do you think that the BPD is able to respond to all the community's public safety needs and/or is the appropriate body to do so?
No, we can't respond to all of the public safety needs in our community. You know, right now, I think that we are appropriate to respond because I think in certain areas, there aren't, there aren't the right types of response available. And so, you know, when the state started cutting funding for, for mental health facilities and state hospital, you know, that ended up getting dumped in local governments' lap. And so those were things that, you know, we weren't used to responding to. We've adapted. We've hired social workers to help with that. We've hired community service specialists to help respond to minor calls that free up the officers to still be able to respond to more major things. But, you know, in combination with, with the fire department, with both of our agencies, you know, we're kind of getting more melding of what types of calls we respond to. And so it's, can we get to all of them? No, there are other, other agencies in the community. Centerstone responds to public safety type stuff with their clients. And so there's other places that are doing other things. But, you know, we're getting to a lot of them, but probably not all of them.
In your professional opinion and expertise, do you think it would be helpful to have a body that, or an entity within the city that develops and helps implement an overall public safety strategy?
Public safety strategy?
Yeah.
I think we can have conversations about that. If you are referring to the CAPS Commission, which I'm sure that's kind of maybe where you're going with this, I'm not sure we need another city department to do that. I think that we could probably use the resources that we currently have available to look at those types of calls and figure out a strategy.
Thank you.
From Councilmembers, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Chief DeKoff. Thank you for everything you guys do. The question is, we provide services to IU students. Does the police department receive any kind of compensation or anything from Indiana University, like the fire department?
The only compensation we receive from the university is if we work supporting events and overtime. The IU reimburses the city for those costs. But for the day-to-day calls, we don't get any compensation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I think what we agreed on so far is we pass a motion for one round of questions for three minutes per councilperson and no second round. So I think right now we can go to public comment. And then if the council wishes to make a new motion, we can do that. Does that sound okay? We, last night, our motion that passed was, we have one round of questions per council member, per presentation. So almost everyone has had a first round here, I think. And we can go to council comment. And if folks would like to change that, we can change that when we come back. Okay. Oh, yes, we, I think we decided that we would not keep track of seconds. But you just got one round, and if you didn't use all your time, you lost the rest of it.
Actually, yesterday, the chair allowed me to ask another question because I had time left over. So.
Can we get one minute? Yeah, I'm just kidding. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Rallo.
So referring to, so let me touch on, we can agree that we have understaffing of police
Yes.
at this point. And so I assume that, we had a consultant report some years back, three or four years ago, that recommended about 30% of the time of police should be focused on community policing, interaction with the community and so forth. This is probably not available to your staff, I would assume. Because, or at least it's not adequate in terms of the availability of officers to do that kind of work. Is that fair to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do you have any estimation of, if not 30%, then what it consists of?
So keep in mind, coming, going through COVID, we pretty much ceased doing all community service type stuff. Coming out of COVID, it has been minimal because we just don't have the staffing to do it. You know, we used to do a teen police academy in the summer, which was extremely popular with, with middle school to high school kids. It's very staff-intensive. We don't do that anymore because we just, we don't have the staffing to do it. We're still able to do our Citizen Police Academy. But again, it stretches the staff pretty thin to try to get them there to present at those things.
Thank you. And thanks for your attendance.
Thank you. That's, that is the end then of our first round of comments, right? Okay. So let's go to public comment now. If anyone in council chambers would like to speak, please come up to the podium. And if anyone online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or enter it into the chat. And our council attorney will assist you. Do we have any takers online?
We do. Our first speaker is joining us with the name of iPad. They should be able to unmute now.
Okay, iPad, if you could, please state your name and you will have two minutes.
My name is Kamala Brown Bart. I'm a member of the Community Advisory on Public Safety. My comment is, the Community Advisory on Public Safety, otherwise known as the CAPS Commission, recently published the 2023 Alternative Public Safety Report on its website. The report documents extensive research on local public safety needs and gas, emerging threats to safety, leading best practices in community safety around the U.S. and includes nearly 80 pages of testimony to by key stakeholders and community members. In our work, the CAPS Commission was impressed with the enormous levels of dedication, innovation, and care that Bloomington's police and fire departments put into their work to provide public safety in our city. However, there are structural reasons why our city feels less safe year after year despite their highly commendable efforts. The main recommendation of that report is for the city to take a more evidence-based, community-led, and strategic approach to safety by funding a feasibility study to assess the organizational, economic, and legal implications of the Department of Community Safety and Resilience. The reason for this recommendation is that our lengthy outreach with key stakeholders and all of the big city departments related to the public safety found that the city of Bloomington is currently unable to respond in a coordinated and strategic fashion to address the top three most widely acknowledged emerging threats to public safety in Bloomington, which are rising or persistent rates of homelessness, drug use, and mental illness. Structurally, we found an institutional gap around the citywide coordination of important safety-related resources and services. In other words, everyone from the heads of city departments to the unhoused residents of our city seem to agree that these three growing safety threats must be addressed strategically. Yet no existing departments believe it is the one in their departmental purview to coordinate such a strategy. Please don't take our word for it. Read the included stakeholder reports in the appendix of our report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other online commenters?
Two more at the moment. Next up is Jason McCollough.
Good evening, Mr. McCollough. You have two minutes. Please start with your name.
Thank you. My name is Jason McCollough. I'm also a member of the CAPS Commission. The BPD budget increased by 50% in the four years between 2019 and 2023 from $16 million to $24 million. From a cost-effectiveness perspective, we would expect crime, or at least violent crime, to have gone down in response to a massive spending increase. However, during the same four years, service calls stayed around the same. Overall crime statistics stayed nearly the same, and violent crime actually rose by 24%. Our report details why traditional law enforcement-led approaches alone to safety are ineffective at preventing crime and violence, both in Bloomington and around the United States. The evidence-based root cause of crime and violence, including our greatest local emerging threats to public safety, are squarely outside the reach of law enforcement departments alone. And also code enforcement departments, or even crisis responders, cannot address these. In contrast, taking a citywide strategic, non-coercive, and community-led approach to providing the basic needs of the most marginalized to providing the basic needs of the most marginalized members of a city has led to reduced crime, violent crime, calls for service, and cost-saving in other cities that we studied. We are not asking you to choose between supporting the existing public safety departments and funding our recommendations. Our commission is confident that the recommendations in our report will improve safety, justice, and economic prosperity outcomes by putting human needs first. However, we are also confident that the workplace morale and staff retention of both the police and fire departments will benefit from having a city entity dedicated to coordinating a strategic response to the root causes that drive the crises to which they are called to respond. To better support our operational stakeholders that presented tonight, I hereby ask the council to include the full cost of the CAPS report recommendations into the safety budget or another part of the city budget as a small step towards creating a safer, more resilient, and more socially just Bloomington.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment.
Next up is Eric Spoonmore.
Hello again, Eric Spoonmore, Chamber of Commerce. We really appreciate the presentation by Chief DeKoff, and we, along with many others in the community, are still concerned about the recruitment and retention issues with BPD. For the chamber, that's the number one priority, public safety, especially with the use of tax dollars. You know, I think it's important that we recognize that the Kalia certification is really a big deal, and, you know, based on the training and certifications alone of BPD under the leadership of Chief DeKoff, you know, we should be the highest-paying department in the state. Just a few suggestions that I think can really help the recruitment effort. I'd like to see a publicly accessible dashboard of police recruitment efforts and, you know, see that distributed, you know, at least weekly, so that we can track the progress and the activity. The mayor's office used to send weekly reports on the number of city employees with COVID, so I think the framework for such a report would seemingly already exist. You know, in particular, it'd be great to know the numbers of applicants, interviews, hires, departures, et cetera. Basically, any data related to recruitment and retention would be extraordinarily helpful and take the guesswork out of what is being done to address the problems. The council could even require a regular report on the recruitment data. I think this would be a great way to signal to the community that our elected officials really want to see results. Right now, we don't know what the recruitment plan is or what actions are being taken to address the staffing crisis on a day-to-day basis. What is the goal? Is there a goal? If the goal is 105 sworn officers, as indicated in the budget, let's publicly acknowledge it and rally the community behind that goal. I mean, look at all that's going on here. We're developing a massive new neighborhood in Oakville. We have aggressive plans to expand the trades district. We're constructing a new public safety headquarters and convention center, and we're installing fiber infrastructure to every home in the city. If we can do all of that simultaneously, certainly, we can hire enough police officers to get back to a number that's helping for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Do we have any other people on?
No, not that I see.
Online? Okay. With that, we will come back to council members. If anyone would like to offer a comment, Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Of course, earlier, I submitted 10 questions with respect to this budget regarding the Showers West project and how that's coming, and I got answers. Many of them are not particularly helpful, so I will certainly have more related to that and that it pertains to this budget. I understand we'll be having a work session on, what, September the 12th, where we can talk about that, and hopefully, we can get some additional questions answered about that. One in particular that concerns me that I hope, Chief DeKoff, you can maybe answer at a future time, I can certainly submit it in writing to be more specific, are about, the current design includes several connections between showers east and west, including an access point from the back of the mayor's office to connect with the new public safety offices, allows for some potential expansion of the mayor's office, details still to be developed, some expansion of council clerk space, and then with a potential hallway connecting the atria. I, my concern is a need for a secure police department, and I want your answers to, do you feel the design is going adequately to meet the needs of a secure and confidential police station with all this public access between City Hall proper and the new police headquarters? And then additionally, an answer to that question was about making a fitness room available to all city employees back there. My understanding is that there already is a fitness facility and the training facility on the south side, so I'd like to know a little bit more specific about that, and many other of my questions that were not adequately answered in the answers to my 10 questions. And then, lastly, I'd like to know, are there any data about officers who are injured when they're conducting welfare checks or noise complaints? So, again, not the time to answer questions now, but these are things that I want to address. And so, because certainly, no lack of confidence in you, Chief DeKoff, and your leadership of this department, and my pride in public safety in this community and how we do strive to be the best at that, I will be voting no on this budget because I have too many unanswered questions regarding this particular budget and the emphasis on non-sworn officers when our need is for sworn officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thanks. Yeah, I echo a lot of what Councilmember Sandberg has just addressed. I do want to focus on the low number of available officers, which seems to be a perennial concern. I appreciate the retention incentives that have been offered by the administration. I also appreciate that the administration and the police union have achieved a mutually agreed contract, but the employed and available police number continues to be, I think, very alarmingly deficient. I understand that we're in competition with other locales, other police forces, but we must recognize this reality and make certain that our compensation makes us competitive. Gun crimes have been increasing. Violent crime rose by nearly 6% in 2022. According to the 2023 State of Public Safety Report, there was an increase in crimes involving weapons increased 64% between 2020 and 2023, from 765 incidents to 1,258 incidents. So, this is very distressing, considering that we have an overworked staff working overtime. They're understaffed. We have reliance on certainly new recruits. We have increasing gun violence, and community policing, which is, I think, absolutely essential, is not currently possible, or it's diminished, but is very important. And here, I appreciate the CAPS Commission report. Clearly, a lot of work and attention went into the report. I do differ with transferring those particular duties of the police officers that involve nonviolent interaction and the various service calls, welfare calls, and so forth. I think that those are very important for police officers to be engaged in, in order to interact with the community. That was the finding of a consultant report several years back, so I would like to focus on increasing that, and the only way we're going to do it is by adequately compensating our police force in order to increase personnel, to increase retention and recruitment. So, I make a plea, I'll be voting against this budget, making a plea that we increase the types of incentives and compensation in order to bring our police force up to an adequate number where we don't have to rely on mandatory overtime. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief DeKoff, for the presentation. First, just wanted to voice appreciation for officers who serve the city every day, and also for Chief DeKoff, and also for the CAPS Commission in following the directions of the city council as approved in 2020, to think outside the box and look at evidence-based solutions about how to offload some of the overburden plate of police officers. That was the goal. We actually heard Chief DeKoff earlier tonight talk about how the police and fire cannot solely respond to all public safety needs, and that's because it's conceptualizing public safety and thinking about public safety holistically, looking upstream at causes, evidence-based causes of crime, of violence, of increasing gun violence, for instance. So, there's a lot of statements that are made from folks we hear from in the public, including Mr. Spoonmore, who just commented, and others who seem to sort of assume that the answer to all things related to public safety or crime or perceptions about that is more police. And I just philosophically disagree with that. That's not to say that we shouldn't pay our police well, treat them well, compensate them well, and endeavor to fully fund and fulfill, sorry, the budgeted positions. I support that, and I think efforts are underway to do that. But I don't want to lose the thread on the continued evolution of thinking around public safety and the idea that there are structural reasons, as noted by the CAPS Commission in comments tonight, but also in their, in their report, why, why to look away from policing for some of these needs and how to address these things. And that's what the idea of a department to coordinate public safety and resilience is about. It's about coordinating appropriately across police, fire, and other services that can work on the upstream causes of criminality and a lack of safety and security. Just a few additional notes, you know, Mr. Spoonmore noted, said something like, what's the goal? The goal is 105 new officers, and we should go after that. It's like, no, the goal is public safety and security for all. That's what we're after. 105 officers might be helpful in getting there, but so too, might be a lot of dedicated resources to housing and mental health. Like, it's a little concerning to me that we had a similar email from Jen Pearl with the BEDC highlighting public safety as the thing to focus on by which she really meant policing in sort of the form of the email, and as a key hallmark of economic development and quality of place, but it's telling that she didn't advocate for those other important elements of quality of place. So, I want us to, I just encourage us to check some assumptions and revisit the CAPS Commission report, and like I did last night, I'll be advocating for inclusion of funds for a scoping study as they recommend. Thank you.
Do any other council members wish to comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I also want to thank Chief DeKoff and all of the police officers who are stretched very thin, and I think that is unfortunate, and I hope that our recruitment goes better in the coming year. At the same time, I agree with Councilmember Flaherty that the police are not, and I believe that Chief DeKoff said as much as well, that the police are not the only answer to public safety and cannot be the only answer. As I mentioned yesterday during the mayor's office budget report, I think that the CAPS Commission's recommendation of exploring a Department of Community Safety and Resilience should be funded for next year. We need a comprehensive strategy to address public safety in Bloomington, and that is not something that has been taken up by any one department. As to this particular budget, I have too many questions to vote yes on it. Chief DeKoff mentioned moving ahead with tasers. I didn't know anything about this. I'd like to know if we're approving funds for tasers or not. There are some lease payments also that I need to get some clarity on. So, there are some technical reasons why I am not going to vote yes tonight, and then also just kind of the overall concept that I want to underline, that we need a broader approach to public safety. So, nothing against Chief DeKoff or our police officers who put their lives on the line every day, but I'm voting no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. There's a lot of parts here. One of the things that I really, truly, and I know I don't want to oversimplify it, but in many cases, it's about prioritizing the dollars and focusing on where you want to spend those dollars. For example, the CAPS Commission recommendations, I'm okay with exploring that and seeing where it could lead and how it could help. I have a real issue, me personally, with encumbering not only the next council, but the next administration with more than that information. Let's get, I'm okay with the information, and we can decide, you know, with others. Many of us up here won't be here. So, I want to be real careful that I don't encumber the wrong things, but at the same time, acknowledge certain things that have been discussed within the community. I mean, I support BPD. I support many of the things we're doing, support chief, but I still got to talk to Director Kidd to find out about some of this nursing strategy, and it's hard for me to recognize that you call dispatch, then you talk to a nurse, and how that responds to expanded call times to respond to that emergency. Yeah, it'll save a few things, a splinter. Yeah, that's one thing. I mean, I got fire trucks up and down my neighborhood, and these are elderly people, and trust me, they got more than a darn splinter, not to disregard anything that was said. So, I think it just needs to be looked more into or get more answers, for example, from So, as much as I do have a lot of support for what we're talking about this evening in the budget, like, much like BPD, I will abstain and then submit other questions, and looking forward to support our budget for these departments moving forward. So, thank you.
Okay, I will, I will also offer up a few comments. I very much support the comments of Councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Flaherty, so I don't want to repeat those. I just want to emphasize, I would say, that public safety in general is so much more than the police department, and I know most folks aren't going to argue with that, but I think there is so much that we're missing when we don't opt for just a feasibility study of what a Department of Public Safety might look at, just like we created a Department of Innovation, right? We have someone working just in innovation because it's, it touches every single department in the city, and it touches everyone in the city, that I think it is that important that we at least do a study to see if this makes sense for us. I mean, most of us walk past unhoused people every day, and it becomes something that is a norm, but it should not be a norm, and safety for those people could be having a house, right, or having a place to sleep at night, or a normal place that their kids can go so that they can go to school rested and fed, and it, it's just, that's not the job of just the police department. So, I, in my mind, this needs to be bigger, and we need to take a more holistic look at public safety. So, I think that, while I do think we need a feasibility study for public safety, I don't necessarily think that needs to be part of the police department budget. I think it should be potentially Office of the Mayor. Tonight, I have a few more questions, and just haven't dug through this particular budget enough, so I will be abstaining. With that, anyone else? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe that the council recommends inclusion of the police department budget as presented within the relevant salary ordinance and appropriation ordinance for consideration.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Second.
Sorry. Thank you. Yes, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Rosenberg?
Abstain.
Rallo?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Scambolori?
Abstain.
And Sims?
Abstain.
Okay, for this, we have 2-3-3, so this one does not get recommended to be included in the budget. This wraps up Day Two of budget hearing. Tomorrow is Night Three. Looking forward to seeing everyone tomorrow night. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.